Seven or eight.
Okay. Read my pocket.
Okay.
Off my wrist.
So we're back from executive session. Got our legal updates. No votes were taken, no decisions were made. And we're starting the regular meeting, so we'll call them in order and you call them.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Farley?
Here.
Mr. Grumes?
Here.
Dr. Hutton?
Here.
Ms. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Rich?
Here.
Dr. Goodman?
Here.
So we'll have the invocation by Councilmember Grumes, followed by the legal affairs.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of grace and humor. Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect Folly's resident staff, our city, and our guests, continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the greater glory of you and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Let me give this to the Bible of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and the beautiful liberty and justice of our.
So we had a fairly, except for one problem during the Fourth of July, kind of uneventful Fourth of July, lots of people, lots of things happening. We did have one hit-and-run accident, which kind of messed up the whole weekend because it happened on Friday night, late Friday night, early Saturday morning kind of timeframe. But thanks for everybody trying to be safe. When we talk about fireworks out here, I was told about a girl that grew up in my neighborhood in North Charleston. She was my brother's age, she's like three years younger than me. Her house caught on fire July the Fourth night, the night of July the Fourth. And she was burnt, her husband was burnt. Her husband had to have extensive stents put in because he, the stress caused him to have heart problems, et cetera, et cetera. And she finally passed away from the fire trauma. Investigation looks like it started on the roof of the house, so we can imagine what they're saying it started from, on the roof of the house. So when we talk about fireworks, not having fireworks out here other than managed fireworks, there's lots of reasons for that to take place, lots of reasons we do that. And public safety is number one. I hate to say it, but faith ends death, it's probably preventable if not a tragic. It was a tragic accident, I'm sure, and nobody knows where they come from, where the sparks come from, but you know, things can be avoided. So that's kind of happy Fourth of July, we made it, we're looking forward to Labor Day making it. And we'll see where we go for the rest of the summer, be safe out there. Dr. Howden did send a video out, I don't know who all you sent it to, but it seems like tiger sharks come to the shores of Folly Beach to have their babies. Great advertising for us, you know, come feed tiger sharks.
That's amazing. Absolutely amazing.
But I seen that, it's like flashbacks of the move.
Shark Beach.
Okay, so we've got the staff reports, Mr. Pope, you and Dr. Elko, who I see slid in here on me, on the report.
So Dr. Elko's going to be the star of the show, and Eric is diligently working to get some more copies of the presentations.
One copy.
One copy, okay. But as a means to introduce, Dr. Elko, she's been working hard for the last few months on our five-year update of the local comprehensive beach management plan. Of all beachfront jurisdictions in South Carolina are required to have this plan. It's especially important when we apply for things like grant money and renourishment. And it's a five-year overview of the land use on the beach, our management issues, and things we're going to be working on to address those issues. You guys authorized, Dr. Elko, to be a vendor for this last year during COVID. Would have been the 2020 local comprehensive beach management plan, but then COVID happened. So Dr. Elko rather is here, she has sent this off to the state and they've given it their blessing. And now it's for you guys to review and give your blessing. Turn it over to our expert.
Okay, so what you have in front of you is not a local comprehensive beach management plan. I think it was distributed to you previously. And I wanted to take this opportunity to just give you a quick update on the condition of the beach. So it's a good time to do that because we've just finished the local comprehensive beach management plan. As Aaron mentioned, this is mandated by OCRN. We've just completed the monitoring of the whole island, so that's mandated by the Army Corps of Engineers. We monitor their project area. We also monitor the new rehabilitated groin field between Eighth East and the washout, and that's a requirement of OCRN, so that's higher spatial resolution monitoring. Eric and I just updated the dune management plan, which is part of this local comprehensive beach management plan. And the Army Corps just did that kind of research dredging project where they placed sand off of the east end. So we have a lot of information about the beach right now, more than we normally do if you would ask me to come and speak to you. So I thought, I was hoping that I could pop some pretty slides up on your screen, but in lieu of that, we have these nice handouts, so we'll just go through, I'm going to take five minutes, and just walk you along the island and let you know how things are looking. So your first slide is, and generally things are looking amazing. On this chart sheet, you see all of this sand pile up, that's a seawall that just a couple of years ago was exposed around 11th Street East. So the dunes look amazing, the beach looks really good along the island. So we'll start on the west end with your slide number two there, I guess it is. So these are photos that I'm going to show you of what the beach looks like today, three years after the 2018 nourishment, and what it looked like three years after the 2014 nourishment, back in 2017. So all these slides have a picture of today on the top and a picture of 2017 on the bottom, right? And up in the left-hand corner is kind of places you where you need to be. So the west end's looking amazing, in 2017, there was some significant dune erosion, compare that to today. The beach width has increased, we had dune recovery, and vegetation has flourished. The next slide is from the pier. So I go out on the Fourth of July every year, causing my celebration, to take the, what I call the economic development photo of the beach. And you see the one from 2017 there on the bottom, and I couldn't get all the way out to that vantage point because of the construction this year, but center street, center portion of the beach has been stable. Three years after nourishment, it's doing fantastic as well, the dunes have grown a little bit there. Next slide. So this shows an example from Sixth Street East. So this area is about four blocks between 310 and 710 East, where we are having some erosion right now. So this is the only area of the beach where I would say is not doing amazing. And I picked the worst pictures I could here. The ones on the bottom show that back three years after the 2014 nourishment, the beach was higher. You know, the groin wasn't nearly as exposed as it is today. The picture on top is what it looks like today, so we're seeing some deflation of the beach profile there, it's lower, and some dune erosion along that four-block area, right? And I'll talk a bit more about why that is at the end if you'd like to learn. The next slide shows 12th Street East, so this is right in the middle of our new rehabilitated groin field between Eighth and the washout. This is just, I mean, I'm astounded at how well that groin field is working. This is an area where after the 2017, sorry, in 2017, so after the 2014 nourishment, people were afraid of losing their homes. You know, they were building seawalls, they were placing riprap out there, dune walkovers were crumbling into the ocean. That groin rehabilitation project, you know, it adds various elements to it. We built groins, put sand out there, and then we did fencing and grassing. And all of those elements have worked marvelously, the dunes have accumulated significant sand, so really pleased with the comments there. Also, last slide, so this is the far east end now, the Summer Place lane is the example I'm showing. So all along the far east end, you know, it's pretty much what it normally looks like three years after nourishment. The seawalls are exposed, the riprap is exposed, but when you do the comparison, it's doing a little bit better this time. And this particular area, Summer Place, actually gained sand over the last year. And I don't think I've ever said that since I've been monitoring Folly Beach since 2015. So, and the reason for that is the sandbar came around Lighthouse Inlet over the last year and attached to the northeast end of the island, and that sandbar's been feeding the beach. And that is the same concept that the Army Corps was implementing when they put that sand off the end. So the rest of the slides in here just go into a little bit more detail about why we're experiencing that erosion between 310 and 710. And if you would like, I can tell you about that, if not, we can save the time.
Give us a quick.
So that area is located directly down drift of the rehabilitated groin field. You know, your beach is very managed, it's very planned. We do a lot of managing and planning out here, but it is still a dynamic barrier island, right? Things change and we can't predict everything. But if you look at this aerial photo I'm showing here on this page, looking down toward the pier, you can see a couple of things jump out at you. The rehabilitated groin field is in the foreground, and then the groins down closer to the pier are those shorter concrete cap groins that the Army Corps rehabilitated back in the 90s. You also notice that the distance between the houses and the water is about the same all the way down to the pier, okay? What's different is the width of the groin field. In the foreground, there's hardly no dune, and then down by the pier, the dune's very wide. All right, so we knew that when we planned the rehabilitated groin field, and that the drawing you see on the top left is an excerpt from that permit application, where we said, you know, the groins near the pier are working really well, we want to model that and implement that plan in the stabilization zone. We know that downdrift impacts might occur, that's what happens when you rehabilitate groins, but there's sufficient protection, the dunes are wide in this area, and it's okay if the dunes erode a little bit there. So that was the premise of the rehabilitated groin field. So the next slide shows a picture of, we're standing on the pier now, looking east. This picture was taken in 2018, in April 2018, and you can see that there are three rows of dunes there out in front of the houses. So previous Army Corps of Engineers administrators got a little overzealous with dune restoration. It was working so well, they just kept putting more and more rows of dunes out every time they did a renourishment project. And that's been good, we have a lot of protection. But in our dune management plan, goal number five, which is written on there, is restore dunes to maximize recreational benefits. So if you have time, look in that local comprehensive beach management plan, it's page 23 of the dune management plan. And it has whole two pages about why we shouldn't necessarily just keep restoring dunes as far as we can. You know, we want to also keep in mind that we mean recreational beach space, because as you see in this picture, during King High Tides, even in 2018, we didn't have anywhere to sit. People were pushing their blankets up into the dunes. So we have to be mindful about restoring dunes. And then the last two slides show you the Army Corps of Engineers project, so this is what they call, quote, their template. So along this section of beach where we're experiencing some erosion, the template is full, okay? And that's why we thought, well, if we lose a little bit of dune, that's not a bad thing, because right now, the Corps actually can, they cannot place very much sand there, because their template, this is a congressionally authorized template, this next to the last slide is getting a little technical here. But the P E L is this line in the middle of this dune here, okay? That's our perpetual easement line, that's where the seawalls exist. And the Corps is congressionally authorized to put a certain amount of sand in front of that, it's their sandbox, if you will, right? If you turn to the next slide, this is what the cross-section looks like in that area between 310 and 710. There's three rows of dunes, so the dunes are filling the template. So when the Corps comes out to nourish, they're like, you're good. Your coastal storm damage reduction project is doing its thing and we don't need to place any sand here. So losing a little bit of dune while right now the adjustment period is kind of a rough patch, like you don't like that the beach is so narrow in there, we're readjusting. We're taking, you know, that aerial photo where you saw the dunes being so wide in one area and so narrow in the other, we're kind of evening out that balance. So for our long-term beach planning, we'll have consistent protection island-wide, which is the goal of all of these plans. Sorry, that was so long.
Yeah.
Thank you for your attention.
So just to make sure, so this wide dune will eventually just kind of get narrowed as the sand sort of settles back on.
Exactly, and we don't have any intention that we're going to lose all three rows of dunes, but you know, a little bit of the loss of that frontal dune, which is what we're experiencing now, was expected. And we do expect it to adjust over the next year and eventually, you know, spread out to where we have that normal, what we're used to, recreational beach.
12th block is wonderful.
Really, surfing has got to be wonderful.
Mark that down for your parking.
Thank you so much.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Mr. Grumes?
Yes.
Dr. Hutton?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Dr. Goodman?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from June to eighth?
Come on.
Have a second?
Second.
Any corrections or additions?
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Dr. Hutton?
Yes.
Mr. Grumes?
Yes.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
It's June 29th, any additions or corrections, have a motion for approval? Have a second?
Second.
Any additions or corrections?
Mr. Grumes?
Yes.
Dr. Hutton?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Travers, you're up first. Just give us your name and address, just for the record, so.
Yeah, Ms. Travers, 303 West Hudson Avenue, Folly Beach. As you guys know, I'm event coordinator for Fab, and we are here for two reasons tonight. The first is for our Save the Day request for 2022. I think that should be in your agenda packet, but just to go over briefly, we're looking to do our New Year's Eve fireworks display on December 31st, followed by the Polar Bear Plunge on January 1st. Taste of Folly, tentatively we have for January 15th with the rain date of January 22nd. Of course, we'd love to bring back Sea and Sand Festival, our oldest festival that we have, on Saturday, February 26th with the rain date of Saturday, March 5th. Of course, the Fourth of July fireworks, and then the Mermaids and Maybes event, which will be this October, hopefully, scheduled for Saturday, September 24th, 2022. Of course, the fireworks display is scheduled to be at Third Block West. I've talked to the fireworks company that ensuring that they can execute it at both low tide and high tide, they said was fine. Same thing with the Polar Bear Plunge, it's typically in front of ties. We can always shift that as needed if we're concerned about construction, ongoing construction. And then the other request, 12th Street closure for that Saturday for Taste of Folly Seas.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve their case?
Someone?
Have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? You're up.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Dr. Hutton?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Grumes?
Yes.
Mr. Rich? Mr. Rich has recused himself for this matter. Mayor Goodman?
Yes.
Thank you. And then, of course, our second and very important reason for being here is our request to shift the Mermaids and Maybes event for 2021 from September 25th to our original rain date of October 2nd. Obviously, the 25th is the rescheduled bridge run, which creates logistical concerns just on getting everything here in a timely manner, which people were referring to being closed. Also, the island does pretty well by staying on its own. The businesses tend to flourish with people coming out here and eating and drinking and hanging out, so we don't necessarily feel like we need to give them a boost that weekend, so we'd love to shift it to the second, so we can really provide that, like, off-season weekend benefit to them.
Motion approved?
Second.
Any questions or comments? I've got one question. So is September the 24th in 2022 going to be this conflict with the bridge run?
No.
You already figured that out?
Yes, it's going to be in April of 2022.
All right.
Yes. Good question.
Mr. Rich has recused. Dr. Hutton?
Yes.
Mr. Grumes?
Yes.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Coming with you now, 78 is withdrawn.
Okay, so Kristin Neal is not going to be here this evening? Mr. Oliver?
My name is David Oliver. My address here is 108 East Ashley. My home address is 1215 East Cross Road, Grantsburg, Illinois. I appeared before the council last month and looking for approval for a continuation of the six access pathways to six parking spots that we have at Beachwalk from East Ashley Avenue. It was voted down 5-2. I'm not here tonight to appeal that decision. What I'm here tonight is to propose a different design. But I would say that last month, the only difference between what I was proposing and what is currently the drawings, as I understand the drawings currently are, is really the concept of one entrance and no sweetgrass in my plan versus three separate entrances and about 60 sweetgrass plants in the current design. So what I'm here tonight to propose is, I call it design number two. If you would look at the 11-by-17 drawing that you have, it's the same sort of format as we had last month. The current design is shown on the bottom, and the proposed design is shown on the top. It is a, I think, a compromise on both sides for Beachwalk. What we're proposing is a 18-foot wide, I call it entrance apron, call it driveway, whatever you want to call it, to the center unit, and then 16-foot wide on the two end units. This, excuse me, follows the option three that Mr. Pope had suggested back in June. And I think we can make that work. But the biggest problem for us is, is if you picture one 12-foot driveway going very close to two cars side by side, we just don't think we can get the two cars in there is really the issue from our standpoint. So for us, of course, we certainly have the six parking spots that are resting underneath our porches. These width of driveways, I think, will let us get the two cars side by side in there. And from the council's standpoint, I think instead of 60 sweetgrass plants, you would wind up with about 25 to 30 in four areas like the original design has, on the two ends, next to the adjacent lots, as well as in the middle, at the intersection of the three units. So what I'm hoping tonight is that we can agree upon design number two and really start to spend more time on what I think we probably both have more important things to spend our time on. Just like before, we've pledged to pay the cost of the drawing modifications for Davis and Floyd, and any cost of re-review on the South Carolina DOT side as well. We would ask that if we move forward with this, that we do this on a direct bill basis. So the words Davis and Floyd, Bill S., South Carolina DOT, if possible. I think it'll keep our books cleaner and probably yours as well, for us to handle those charges directly with those two agencies. That's our design number two. Any questions that I can answer for you tonight?
Do we have a motion for approval? Do you have a motion for approval?
So moved.
All right, have a second?
Second.
Now, any questions, yeah? Before you all ask a question, I just want to make a couple of points clear. Number one is, yeah, Mr. Pope worked diligently to try to figure out a compromise. Number two, the sweetgrass plantings is not Folly Beach's idea. If it was me and my idea, it'd be raised curves there. But DOT says we're going to have a vegetative buffer to separate pedestrian passes, like on West to West from the street. So those sweetgrass plants are near and dear to the DOT's heart, not Folly Beach's heart.
All right.
Because we have to keep, because we have to keep them up, you know, so.
Well, and really, in all seriousness, the reason that we're lobbying for the little bit wider access pathway is so we don't, so they don't get run over. Because it's all ground level right there at that block.
All right, I thank Mr. Pope for working so hard on this. Because if it weren't for him finding a compromise, you'd be hard pressed to have four foots up here.
And I would echo that.
Because you're complaining about not being able to put two cars in a 12-foot driveway. People put them in eight-foot driveways all the time. So I don't see your argument there. So please just thank, please thank Mr. Pope for working so diligently on this.
And I will publicly, I have privately an email to him, but I certainly will publicly, we appreciate the help.
So I just need an update then, because things have changed since your email where you stated that you felt you were trampled, crushed, ignored by this process, so on and so forth. So I need to clarify with you, because your feelings are real. So through this whole process, are you still believing that you've been trampled, crushed? Those types of language that I read here, ignored and trampled.
Do I feel that my feelings have been?
No, you said, "I think." Here is the old information, okay, so I need an update. The quote is, "That I think" got trampled and ignored the last time you met with this group. So I need an update, because you think, you feel, those are real. So I need clarity.
Okay. So if you go back to last month, I'm sort of new to the council procedure, first time last month. It seemed like on the drive home that the only thing different between what we were proposing and what was in the current design was the sweetgrass plants. And so it seemed like that the need for parking, for Beachwalk's standpoint, just didn't make any difference. And I mean, I'm trying to be honest with you here.
No, that's why I'm seeking clarity, because this is, you know, we have moved with the process. It seems to me that if, I just need today clarification, because this is what I have in writing. Do you still believe the process and feel that you were trampled and ignored today?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Pope?
Mr. Parker?
No.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Grumes?
Yes.
Dr. Hutton?
No.
Mr. Farley?
No.
Ms. Ray?
No.
Mayor Goodman?
It don't matter what I say. It's been turned down, four to three, five to two, it doesn't matter. But that's what happens to my vote when it gets to me, that's why most mayors don't vote, because it's already decided before it gets here. So that request was turned down.
Okay.
So we're back to where we were. Thank you very much.
That's unfortunate. Is it proper for me to ask why once again, as I drive home tomorrow? Why was the?
Well, normally we don't have them explain their votes, because if you want to contact them individually, that would be the thing to do, to get your why, okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks. All right, citizen comments? All right, citizen comments?
Yes.
So, before you get started, give us your name and address, so I know where you are.
I don't sound like a smart, but Michael Brent Lesser, my address is Earth. I'm born in Charleston, I mean, in South Carolina, I have a social security number here. Trying to go about this the right way. My religious, I appreciate what y'all got going on there with your God thing. My spiritual reality, akin to Jesus, is that the world wants me to be down there, like, sleeping outdoors and so on and so forth, and like, with my divinity and religious stuff aside, the Supreme Court has ruled on the, what someone that has nowhere else to go, or in my case, I don't wanna go anywhere else, the rights of someone. And I've been thinking about the First Amendment, which is my, my religious freedom should be not squandered. I called the city, I swear to the chief of police, I called the city attorney when I mentioned in Article Six, Section Two, which says, you have your daddy clause, which means there's a big club in the federal government called the Article Six, Section Two, which means all municipal and city governments have to cap, you know, fall in step with that. When I mentioned it to Daddy, basically, I'm not gonna say fly kite, but he chuckled, he said this conversation is over. Did no dignified, no dignity whatsoever. So they called the FBI today. I'm also disabled Americans with Disabilities Act, George Bush nineteen ninety. If you've heard of Lesser's Tandem on, Lesser's Jeweler's Clothing, I'm a Lesser. My grandfather fought in World War Two and liberated my grandmother from four and a half years of German occupation, you know, liberated her from two.
So you're gonna run out of time in a minute, so what's, what's your request?
My request is to be able to not have the police, like, if I'm in my car late at night, not, you're not breaking the law. Or if I, if I'm gonna take my sleeping bag out towards the washout, I've already been, went to jail a year ago. And Officer Shane Smith lost his job and wrecked his squad car a couple of days afterwards. I, I don't wanna have any problems with the, the law out here.
Well, I will.
Worshipping God.
I will tell you.
Supreme Court has already ruled that, that I have the right to do it.
But you don't have any problems if you follow the local municipal ordinances, which says you're not gonna camp out here, you're not gonna sleep in your car out here.
Well, I am, and I guess I'm gonna be Rosa Parks. So like, I have, you need to look at the Supreme Court ruling on it. Are you, so you're stronger than the Supreme Court?
I think.
Because I, my family's beating the Supreme Court, lesser versus.
Well, good luck, that's all I can tell you.
So, I'm recording this.
I don't care, it's recorded.
You're saying that, you're saying that my constitutional Bill of Rights are, have no.
I don't think your constitutional Bill of Rights has been stepped on, squashed, or anything.
Well, how can you tell me that I can't spend time on the beach? You own the sand?
The same way that we tell everybody else you don't camp on the beach.
Okay, well then, you're gonna have fun with what's gonna happen?
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else with citizen comment? Okay. No boards of commission reports today, old business ordinance twenty dash twenty-one. An ordinance chapter to amend one thirty-four, offenses against public welfare of Folly Beach Code of Ordinances by repealing in section one thirty-four point one hundred dash one thirty-four, face coverings, requiring that face coverings or masks be worn in public in the city of Folly Beach to duration of state emergency issued by the state of South Carolina. Second reading, take this out of the process, have a motion for approval?
Come in.
Have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Thank you. All right.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Dr. Hutton?
Yes.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Mr. Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Goodman?
Yes.
Passes.
Okay, so we'll move on to new business, which is ordinance chapter to amend seventy-two, chapter seventy-two parking regulations of Folly Beach Code of Ordinances by amendment section seventy-two oh nine, boat landing rules. To reserve boat trailer parking seven days per week per the request of Charleston Park Commission. This, have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
And this, this is just clarifying what's already been in the ordinance for years.
I have a question.
Okay.
Where did this request come from? It says the Parks Commission, I spoke to Mark Patrick earlier about something unrelated to this, kinda related but not really. He said he didn't know anything about it, he really didn't think twelve months out of year was, was necessary.
Well.
Is there, if it was, if it didn't actually come from their commission, it's because can we do it like on a seasonal basis?
Because they wanted us to enforce no parking in the, the straightaways for cars and boat trailers.
Right.
So that's where it come from.
But that was?
And last, I spoke to Mark too, he called me, after we talked to him, he understood, he said, "Oh yeah, well, okay."
I mean, as long, as long as they're fine, I just, if you've got people using the boat ramp for canoes and kayaks, then they're not gonna have trailers. And now season, it's not a big deal. They should close the Solari Boat Landing in June, two times in four years, so they shouldn't.
That's not our, that's a.
But I know that's not our problem, but that's why we're having such a problem in our landing right now, and that's why this is really coming up.
It's still, their landing, and I understand, you know, I understand that you can't get in and out of there, but trust me, I understand you can't get in and out of there, but it's, you know. Any other questions? All right.
Dr. Hutton?
Could you restate what the question was?
The question was, are you voting on twenty twenty?
That's right.
You're voting on twenty-five dash twenty-one, taking out weekends and holidays, that's the question. So they can enforce it all the time without anybody questioning whether it's a weekend or a holiday.
Okay, so we answer, so yes.
Okay.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
No.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Goodman?
Yes.
Passes. First reading?
First reading. Ordinance, first reading for ordinance twenty-six dash twenty-one, ordinance to amend chapter one eleven alcoholic beverages to clarify the definition of alcoholic beverage to encompass all types. Have a motion for approval?
Come in.
Any second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing nothing?
We'll be back to.
Oh, yeah, we did want to talk about that.
No.
I'm glad you said that. On page thirty-seven, was it thirty-seven?
I will move to section.
Well, I didn't mark it here, I marked it with a L.
That's right.
Okay, so this should say, any bottles or non-glass, any cans or non-glass bottles. Change bottles to non-glass bottles. So that's my motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Okay, only amendment.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Grooms?
Yes.
Dr. Hutton?
Yes.
Mayor Goodman?
Yes.
And then passes.
All right, back to the original as amended.
And Dr. Hutton?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mayor Goodman?
Yes.
Passes.
So, we have an ordinance twenty-seven dash twenty-one, ordinance adopting a five-year update to the two thousand fifteen City of Folly Beach Comprehensive Plan. Have a motion to send us the planning, remand the planning?
So moved.
Question or comments?
What was the question again?
Send us the planning. Thank you. So without objection, we start the plan. Pay attention to this one very closely. It's y'all's appointment. And mine, I get one vote. Resolution twenty-eight dash twenty-one. So this is a resolution by Folly Beach City Council approving, appointing the municipal clerk for the city of Folly Beach as Mr. Wesley Graham. Have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
And I will say, I think Mr. Graham was the top choice for everybody who did interviews in the process. So we have a starting program.
He is arriving in Charleston on the twenty-sixth, so I think he's gonna report to work on the twenty-seventh. And be here, that'll put him right before the closing, the agenda closes the next week, so he'll be here for the August agenda.
For every time. All right.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Farley?
Yes.
Mr. Grooms?
Yes.
Dr. Hutton?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Mayor Goodman?
Yes.
All right, city council comments, who wants to start, who wants to start?
Okay.
All right, next.
For the first time in eighteen months, I actually went to the airport last week and got on a plane. I went to visit family in Connecticut. It's always good to be back where I grew up. While I was only away for a few days, it seemed like a long time, so it's really appreciative to be back here on Folly. And I wanna thank everyone that makes this place, everything that it is, the community, folks that work here, so forth. Thank you.
I wanna follow up with the comprehensive plan. And then I wanna follow up with it in action. I have had the privilege and honor of doing ride-arounds with Public Safety and the Department of Public Works. Because from the comprehensive plan, it's clear that safety, security, quality of life, parks and recreation is all essential. And I am overwhelmed on the front line, honestly, running huffing and puffing, and cannot tell you what that experience was. Secondly, to be on the waste management truck and out digging and in the trenches a lot of the times with the landscapers was a gift, an absolute gift. And so that exemplifies for me why I sit here and why I work.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Farley?
Nothing at all, sir.
Ms. Ray?
Um, thank you again to Public Works and Public Safety for keeping us safe during Fourth of July. I think it was pretty, you know, what we thought, and that's it, we're on the downward slope of summer, so make it count. Thanks for watching.
Hey, everybody, the Exchange Club has a meeting this Thursday, seven o'clock at the Hut. There'll be fried chicken and probably some of Laverne's famous banana pudding.
I'll be out of town.
Oh, well.
You consent, you consent to banana pudding before you leave?
There's plenty of good cooks on the island.
I'll take the potatoes.
Right. They'll be awarding two college scholarships to two students, so you wanna make sure you know who those people are. And we'll also be collecting school supplies, so if you've got any school supplies, school starts at August fifteenth this year. Coming quickly, summer's almost over, so if you've got any school supplies, you can give them to me, give them to Laverne, give them to DJ, give them to Adam. You can give them to anybody here, they'll get them to us. So, they need school supplies, because they're starting back in person schools, so.
They could eat right down there.
There you have it.
All right. Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.